I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is the approval of our meeting agenda and minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the regular board meeting agenda for this evening as well as the minutes for July 28th, 2025's work session, July 28th, 2025's business meeting, and August 11th, 2025's work session. Do I have a motion?
Sound moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any discussion?
Quiet.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. All right, now it's the really exciting part, quality in action. Okay, so a reminder, we don't have our student school board reps in yet because school starts next month, so September. I would be super excited to have them kick off things for us, but I am happy to invite all of our administrative leaders and program leaders for all of our buildings and programs because it's the beginning of the school year and I want to hear all the amazing work that you guys are doing, so en masse or one at a time, however you want. And I'll hand it over to you.
Hello. We're starting with the youngest learners, so I get to go first. My name is Kristin Summertana Weeks. I'm the early learning coordinator. So we'll start with ECFE because those are truly our youngest learners. We had stay-in plays, they used to be called drop-in plays, now they're stay-in plays every morning, every Wednesday morning in the summer. They were very well attended. We had 14 families at one of them on a rainy day, so that was lovely to have that full of an attendance. We also, this summer, hired a brand-new parent educator, which we're very excited about. Her name is Bethany Pankow, and she's very eager to get started and meet the families and get classes going. We are, through community ed, continuing to send welcome packets to the families who have just had babies, onesies and books going out and information about the ECFE classes. And then finally, the big news is that we made a big move out of the Family Education Center and into Capoja. So we have come home to the elementary schools and we're excited to get families into the schools earlier. They get to see the facilities, meet the staff, be in the space. It's a beautiful space and windows and we're, the ECFE staff have been amazing over the last few weeks moving things, and we also want to say a big thank you to the facilities staff because they've been a huge help, so it's very exciting. And we have an open house on Wednesday, September 3rd, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Capoja, so families can come and see the new space. And then in preschool, we are filling up, we've got three full classes of all-day four-year-olds at Lincoln this year and two full classes of full-day classes at Capoja. Their threes classes are nearly full, so it's really just those half-day four-year-old classes that have spots left, which is great. We're so excited to have so many preschoolers coming in this year. And the teachers, just today, as they came back, had training on our new online tool that's going to make it so much easier to tie the curriculum to assessment, and they're getting really excited and they're grateful to have it and they're excited to explore it and really use our curriculum to full capacity. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Sophia Bussard, Principal, Lincoln Center Elementary. It was my first day with all of our licensed teachers today, and it was truly welcoming. It's been kind of the feeling that I've gotten from the district and from my colleagues here, and today yet again it was represented. So some highlights for us, the team approach. When we talk about well-rounded education, we truly have a lot of support at Lincoln Center. I was able to present our skip today, which is directly tied to our scorecard for the district, and a lot of our Bilt members actually presented instead of me, which was really nice to see as they did a lot of that work alongside with me in summer. So really celebrating my team and getting to know them and them getting to know me and all the opportunities we had today were awesome. We get to share some ice cream with a ice cream truck, which was really nice, and also celebrate the outdoor garden. So we have an outdoor classroom, which is really a garden, and it's something that previous administration and current teachers and staff really worked on. So I don't take the credit for it, I'm just lucky to be able to share that space with our kids. But we do have an outdoor space, so that's our outside classroom that our pre-K5 friends can utilize, and it's really beautiful. There are raised beds, there are flowers, so come in and check it out, and you're welcome to come. We also get to celebrate art, and in addition to art, which is one of our specials this year, with the therapy dog. So our art teacher has a therapy dog, which is another fun element for students and for teachers, and it's really a great dog, and he's very well-trained, so our kids are really excited. We also got to welcome Dash, so part of 917, into our building. So far, we have two kiddos in it. We're really excited to share a space. As you know, Lincoln Center is a huge building and it's beautiful, and there are a lot of spaces. So Dash is the new program within our building, and we've welcomed them already. We also have open house, but it's Thursday and it's 10 to 6:00. It will be open house style this year, so families are welcome to come as they wish. That way, we're not really keeping them to a schedule, and if they choose to, they're able to reach out to their teacher, any teacher, and schedule 20 minutes of individualized time. And the rest of it is passport activity and being able to kind of travel around the school. So I'm excited to be there and see them. And that is all I have for you all tonight. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sophia. It's so nice to see that we're already collaborating and coordinating across district. I never wear pink. This is the first time I've ever worn pink, so collaboration is in the air. Yes, we welcome back staff today. We had a lot of fun, and Kristin kind of stole my first point, that we welcomed ECFE into the building once again, and it's really sad that you were excited just for windows. It really was, yes. We have heat in the winter, and we have air conditioning in the summer too, by the way, but it's super cool to have them join us. We are so excited. I had the calmest summer that I've ever had as an administrator here in the district, right up through about second week in August, when we decided we were going to move a whole program over to Capoja. And in working with Jean Zender and with Kristin too, and the district office, we made this happen, and we're so excited that we get our littlest learners into the building with their families, after-school classes, and also on Saturdays as well. So it's great to have them there. Today, we also talked over our skip plan as well. We have very similar plans in the elementary. I think one of the things that you're going to hear over time is the coordination and kind of the common expectations that we have in the elementaries, because we do think that Capoja kids and Lincoln kids, who are all Packers, will funnel into a middle school and a secondary program, and we want them to have similar but not exact experiences. So we do have similar plans there. Another piece of excitement is Capoja was selected for the fourth year in a row to receive Walzer Subaru donation, and so Walzer Subaru was there today, and each teacher got kind of a school supply kit along with what's coming, is a $10,000 donation for our teachers to make sure that our kids have what they need throughout the year as well. So that was really exciting. You've read all the stories about how classroom teachers don't have what they need through public education, and we do our best, but we have some great community partners, and Walzer Subaru is one of them. Kara Levin was there today too, but I did not even ask when a section's going to be on about us, but they normally send me a little something and I'll send it to the board so you guys can see it. We talked a lot about pride today, in South St. Paul Pride. I shared community feedback from our survey. Our community absolutely loves these schools, and I had our teachers just kind of read comments. It was like, you know when they, like on some shows, they read the mean tweets? These weren't mean tweets. These were awesome things that people are saying about our schools, and it's true, and we need to lean into that narrative, and that needs to be our narrative, that we need to shout off the mountaintops, that people love our schools. Every school district has issues that they're working on, right? But by and large, our community absolutely loves our schools, and I wanted our teachers to know that today. So we also kind of constructed two bulletin boards together as a staff, and one was, "South St. Paul Packers Are." I want to make sure that our kids know that there's a secondary building here that eventually they get to go to, and they get to play sports and do activities and learn all sorts of fun things at. And I think sometimes on the south end of town, they don't always realize that. So "South St. Paul Packers Are," that's our pride board, and our commitment statements to each of the students. So we share with them what we'll do to make sure that they're the best South St. Paul Packer that they can be. Our theme this year is also unplugged. It's so funny, we watched a movie today, it was about 55 minutes long, but our theme was unplug. So anyways, look past that. But it was all about how kids these days are on devices way too much, and how we need to find ways to promote better balance with our kids too. So things like reading, getting outside, doing alternative things than a video game or being on your cellphone. It's going to be a theme all year. So we watched a movie that our PTA bought a subscription to this year called Screenagers, and boy, did it really get the crowd going as to what we can do all year long to make sure that our kids experience life unplugged. We also have a family connection day on Thursday as well. We'll have a food truck there and an ice cream truck and just a whole bunch of fun thing for kids to do. It's also picture day, I believe it's picture day in both buildings, so we want to make sure that kiddos come and get their pictures as well. Okay? So lots of fun stuff, and lots of fun stuff in both elementaries. So thanks.
Thanks, Terry.
Hello, Board. I'm Leah Borg. I'm the principal at the middle school, and I'm here to tell you how the middle grades are shaping up the school year. We had our first license day, like the rest of the district, with licensed staff started today, but we were in the building last week. We were looking, and the week before, looking at our school continuous improvement plan, looking at setting some goals to align with the district scorecards, and getting some new curriculum onboarded. So our science and English Language Arts teams are going to be using some new curriculum this year. Science is using a curriculum called Amplify, and the English Language Arts team is using a curriculum called Arts and Letters, and that's a run-up, the middle school version of the wit and wisdom that's being used in the elementary schools. We have two goals in our skip for the year. One is on attendance and increasing positive attendance by 3% or 3% of our, more of our students will have positive attendance. And then one is on passing grades and making sure that at least 87% of our students have passing grades across the board, possibly more, and we're going to set our sights really high. And we had a conversation with our staff today about how that's not just pushing the pass button in the gradebook, that's making sure that we are clear with our standards, making sure that we're clear with what we are teaching and what we want students to be able to know and do at the end of a unit, and making sure that they're proficient in those standards. We're going to get to those goals in a number of ways. One is we're going to work on having more effective content level and grade level team meetings and making sure that those meetings have really clear objectives. They, we are starting on time. We have people that are doing the work in the meetings and before the next meeting. We're going to make sure that we have a positive climate and culture for both staff and students. One of that is continuing to use those catalyst strategies that we've been training on over the past couple of years. And one is to make sure that we continue with our strong academic standards and using things like that lesson plan framework, making sure that we have clear summative assessments at the end of every unit. It was a great day in the middle school today with the staff. I'm looking forward to having students. We had a little preview of students coming in for our back-to-school days. The previous two weeks, there's two nights that they came in, they got their pictures, they picked up their schedules, and everyone seems really relaxed. Parents and students feel like they're ready to start the school year, they're not anxious, which is something that is new to middle school. We usually deal with a lot of anxiety. It seems like that that's been dialed down this year, and students are ready to come in. We do have our connections teachers or advisory teachers are meeting with our students and families this Wednesday and Friday. The families got an invite through Parent Square today, and they signed up for a time to come in and meet, and those times are Wednesday and Friday, and we look forward to having everybody back in the building next week. So, thanks so much.
Thanks, Leah.
School Board Superintendent, greater school community, my name's Chuck Ochaki, and I'm the proud principal of the high school, and I want to start off differently, like this is just exciting. Can we just, like, summer, it's a sad time, people are sad, summer's over, but the energy today in the building, the energy last week when our students came back to start activities and athletics was just amazing, and I'm super pumped to have our parents come in on Wednesday or Friday, walk their kid's schedule, meet their teachers in our family connect day, so really excited about that. First day of school, just so our families know, is September 2nd for grades 9, 12, and all of our new students, and it's the 3rd of September for grades 10 and 11, and then we'll just roll in. So we've made some changes at the high school. Since 2022, I've had the opportunity to work with staff to discuss concerns and issues we've had in the previous year. We survey the staff, we check with our site solutions team, we create what are the changes that we want to see for the next year. These committees examine the issues, study possible solutions, and then create the changes we believe our school will make our school even better. This summer, we examined attendance tardies, win Wednesday, our current grading practices, and the connections class. And today, we enrolled this, all these new changes out to our staff, and what was really cool is it was our staff members who serve on the committee sharing it with their colleagues. So attendance and tardies, really, you've probably heard, right? We are really concerned about attendance, and so we're really hitting attendance hard. We want our kids in school, and one of the big things is we want to reinforce the value of in-person learning, challenging that student mindset that you can get anything on Schoology, right? Emphasize that not all learning can be replicated online, and that our teachers, case managers, and staff are much more effective supporting students when they're actually in school with us. So we have some consequences, but really what was exciting are the incentives. We never say thank you to the kids who do all the right things, ever. We just assume that they're going to continue to do it. So this committee came up with some incentives for us to, for tardies. For example, students who have zero tardies in a week will be entered into a drawing, right? Where they can skip the line for breakfast or lunch, they can get a free homework pass, they can get into an activity for free, and there's some other incentives that they can do. We've also incentivized coming to school for absences. So we're excited, and I'll explain why, we're super excited. Win Wednesday, the Win Wednesday committee met, and it was really amazing because there's always this feeling about Win Wednesday. And I showed them the data because I surveyed students, staff, and families and guardians, or parents and guardians, and there is universal support for Win Wednesday from students, staff, and parenting guardians. What we did need to do though is make some changes, and the big change that I've been sharing with our families is Win Wednesday actually won't start until the seventh week of the trimester. Weeks one through six, all kids are going to be in class. There's some internal stuff that we're going to do differently to ensure that our kids are passing, because just like everyone else, passing classes is really important, especially in the high school. Our grading committee met and actually talked about, we're doing 70/30 summative formative assessments, but the really exciting thing for me is we're going to ask our students to do a post-summative assessment reflection, and really asking them, after they've taken the test, written the paper, done the project, about their learning of taking the test, taking, you know, writing the paper, doing the project. And that is something that's going to be new for us at the high school, but we're really excited about the kids learning about their own learning. And then connections, we needed to make a change in connections, and so the connections committee met, and the changes that we're making are really exciting. We'll continue to do grade checks and connections, but we're going to use Zello to help us with our career and post-secondary planning in connections. And so our students are going to take a survey on the 9th to let us know some things about themselves, and then they're going to actually start working on their Zello lessons. And so Zello is a tool that will help our students in grades 9 through 12 figure out what it is that they want to do after they complete grades 9 through 12. I'm super excited about this. Families will be able to take a look at it. I spent about 25 minutes trying to figure out what it is that I want to do with my life. It was super cool, and it's really fun. The other thing is, we have this class called Connections, and it's really designed to make connections with kids, but our staff didn't feel like they were making connections, and so every week, we're going to pause, and they're going to do rounding conversations with one or two kids. So twice a year, they're going to have a sit-down conversations with the kids in their Connections class to get their feeling about how things are going within their school. So the other big excitement we have is the principal advisory committee has changed. I will be asking for nominations for every Connections class, and I will meet weekly with a different grade to figure out what's going well and what we need to continue to work on. So one week, I'll meet with all the ninth graders of Connections class, the representative 10th, 11th, and 12th. We talked about today our skip plan, which is also about passing classes and being in school, and you'll see that everything that we've done this summer actually leads into us achieving that goal. But we actually talked about today roots. And South St. Paul, and the roots that we create in our kids, well, they're in the high school, and how important those roots are, just like in a tree, to helping them be successful. And so we're going to spend a lot of time really planting our roots for our kids, making sure that they have a good, secure, settled high school where they feel they can be who they want to be and be as successful. So, thank you very much. Any questions?
That was so much information.
We were told two or three minutes, and I didn't make it, so, yeah. And I cut a lot out, so.
Thank you.
Well, I can just say, they did so much cool stuff that I'm just either doing it or I'm replicating whatever they just talked about right here. I'm Robin Schwab. I get the privilege of working with students from kind of across the district at all the different sites, but the site I'm going to talk about today is the Community Learning Center. This is for our 11th and 12th grade students, and we serve up through age 21. And we've done a lot of things. When we welcomed our staff back today, we spent a lot of time, like the other sites, going over our skip goal and matching up with the scorecard. Our goals are aligned with the graduation rate and attendance, and we really had some conversations today about what makes a grade, what makes a credit. As we've been kind of planning the last few years, we've done a lot of work with standards and putting the curriculum and mapping, and so we took that further, and we all kind of did show and tell on how gradebooks should be set up, and we have a consistent gradebook, so the parents, as they're looking, should be able to have a good read on where they're at. We will be having our Welcome Back Night on Wednesday that will run as an open house. We will have the station set up so parents can sign up for their transportation or their food service or pictures, all of those pieces that they would need or look at the building, connect with us. And then we are spending our time on Friday and Tuesday next week, meeting with families to go over their continued learning plans, to make sure everyone is onboard and knows what we can do to support the students and what their goals are for graduation. Now, like Chuck said about Zello, we have that incorporated in our work at the CLC too. Our theme for the year, and this was voted on by the kids, created by the kids, it is called Grown 101. So the whole year has themes about what they need to do to figure out how to be adults, and that theme will be covered in some of our X-terms and our just Connections curriculum as we have Zello introduced and played out. Some of you know this, some of you don't, but Thursday, Monday through Thursday, it's a six-period day with Connections, so they do have a 15-minute touchpoint with their Connections teacher every day, but Fridays every week is a support for the students. They come 45 minutes, meet with their Connections teacher, and they build a plan for the day. And that could be if they need support in a class, they could use that time for credit recovery, and as part of that, we have different supports sprinkled in for different speakers that come in from the outside community, talk about different pathways for work opportunities. We have the career counselor come over, Mr. Booth comes and does some different things about FAFSA or scholarships. So students really do come Friday, pick their path, and work with their Connections teacher, so they really do get that extension if they need it, they get that support that they need in class. And so we really just firmed up what that looks like. We're changing some of our lunch schedule and those pieces to give kids more opportunities as well, and we just really wanted to make sure that we were intentional because we are switching some of our online software for credit recovery, actually all of our software. So our teachers spent the afternoon digging into that, and we want to make sure that it's mapping correctly. So those are the big things, and we look forward to welcoming our new neighbors on the first floor. We have tri-district moving in for the health careers, our program, and we just look forward to all the different changes, and we are still enrolling a lot of new students. So, that's what we have. Any questions for me?
I guess I'll open it to the Board. Any questions or comments for our whole team who was presented tonight?
Thank you all for coming and sharing.
Yes. So much information that you shared with us. I'll probably email you questions later. Yeah. Thank you so much. I think this time of year is all excitement and the execution of the preparation, and thank you so much for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else want to, before they leave? Okay.
Have a blessed year.
Next up, item 3B is stakeholder comments to the Board. As a reminder to the community, there are two ways to make comment to the Board. You can either submit an online form or appear before the Board in person. If you would like to speak in person, the Board has set time aside on the second Monday of each month at 6:30 p.m. during our regular extended work session meetings. I will report that no one came to speak to the Board at our meeting on August 11th, and we also received no online submissions during that time. I will now turn things over to Vice Chair Claflin to give an update on our work session this evening.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, we met, and most of the discussion was focused on enrollment updates. There is quite a bit of planning that goes into setting up all of those classrooms at those schools, and estimating how many students are going to be at each one is a challenge. You want to get the right number of students in the classrooms and the right staffing, so they have some estimates of how many students they're expecting, but October 1st is the official count that everything is benchmarked against. We heard about how some of the adjusted pupil units are calculated. One student isn't always one pupil unit, and it's interesting to understand how that funding is dependent on students actually attending every day at school. And this all leads into possible budget revisions, if that's necessary. Some changes have already been made because of enrollment at Capoja, adding another section. We also discussed our public relations and community engagement schedules. There's quite a bit of activities that happen at the beginning of the school year with the walkathon coming up, a lot of opportunities for the Board to be out talking with all of the members of our community, and you can find us at a lot of these events, football games, and all sorts of different community events. And hear more about our schedules later. And earlier this month at the work session, one of the really interesting things was the discussion of the brand refresh, and I think we'll see more about that later this evening.
Thank you. All right. Now I will hand things over to Dr. Zambrino for the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Chair Human. Wow, what fun energy in the space today. It was so fun getting into the buildings and watching our principals and program leads just working with the teachers and the excitement, the collegiality, the collaboration, and, you know, you kind of heard it here, there is just a nice sense of calm coming into the year, which tells me everyone's feeling like they've got it pretty well in control. I will say, it's always a little nerve-wracking this time of year, did we miss anything? And so if we did, please be patient, but you can tell just the care and thought that goes into it. And I use the term district leadership team, that's our term, is really our directors and those, you know, in the back of the room, directors, coordinators, principals, assistant principals, and you obviously hear me repeat myself, the small but mighty team, but I would pit our team against anybody's team, like the talent that we have coming into this year to just continue to do great, great work and do right by our kids. We've seen our kids growing, and that's because our teachers continue to learn and grow, and I just can't wait to see what we get done this year. So, welcome back to our teachers today. We'll have the district kickoff tomorrow, so hoping everybody comes to that. We have food trucks and some fun just to kick things off and get everybody grounded, and then our ESPs are back Wednesday, and of course, we start rolling the kids back in next week. So, very exciting time. I know, as we heard, it's a little melancholy when summer comes to an end, but I think deep down, everybody's ready. The kids are so excited to be back in with their teachers and their peers and their friends. You know, the single most, I mean, at home, their first teachers are always the family, but outside of that, the single most important person in a child's life is their teacher, and the next one after that is their principal, who are really providing that experience for them, and we have the very, very best. So, super excited about what that means for this year, but it is that time to kind of go through some of the things we've got to get done. So we have, we call it our annual census update. Essentially, the simplest way to put that is, we need current information, so please, 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 make sure you can log into Infinite Campus, or you can, if you're not sure how to do that, just check in at the school during the open house. We, it's super important that we have the right contact information and emergency contacts, because sometimes things happen and a parent or family member's not available. We want to make sure we know who's next on deck if we need to get ahold of somebody. And we have some really great tools to support language, so we want to know language preferences because we can communicate now with So, we want to know language preferences because we can communicate now with some great technology in multiple different languages. So, families, please make sure to get in there and update that information so if we need to get ahold of you, we can do that. This is also the time of year where we push hard for families to fill out the Application for Educational Benefits. This kind of came up a lot last year as we were looking at our compensatory aid situation, and we got some great support from our local legislators and others to keep that in place. But essentially, the Application for Educational Benefit, it used to be what we call that Free or Reduced Price Lunch Application. We now know that everybody gets a universal free meal, but there's still a lot of benefits to our kids and to our families and, of course, to the entire district that families can get that form filled out. And so, for families, they can get, while lunch is free, there's also discounted fees for athletics and activities. Internet providers provide opportunities. We get reduced price or even free field trips for kids based on our, we call that our FRL, our Free and Reduced Price Lunch Status. Our technology, we get an E-rate, which is the price we pay for technology services. So, like, again, it benefits families at home in terms of memberships and activities, but it does bring a lot of revenue that we use, and it all goes right into our school. So, these are dollars that go right to the classroom to support our kiddos. So, I know it can be a little annoying when we keep calling you to get the form in, but if you can partner with us, we really appreciate that. Another important one coming up, it's no fun for us, but it is the state law that sometimes if kids don't have their shots in, they can't come to school. And so, we, I know Dr. Burkhard and our Student Services team has worked hard on our schools to set up immunization clinics and make sure that our kids can meet compliance with the state law. But we want to make sure that we have that in place. We can work with families if there's like a conscientious exemption. We still need to get that documented. So, one way or another, we got to get documentation on immunization. So, again, if you need help getting a vaccination, the Dakota County Health is hosting a vaccine clinic in partnership with us on Wednesday, the 27th, so just a couple of days from now, from 3:00 to 6:00 at the secondary. So, you can show up, and they'll have the shots and other resources available. We want to make that as seamless and easy as possible, but like I said, we definitely don't want to get to a place where we have to tell a student they can't come to school. So, please partner with us on that and making sure that the children get their immunizations. Some of the shows already been kind of played out here. We heard a little bit about our new early learning location, and it is a beautiful space, as Kristen mentioned, and Terry, Principal Breetoy and his team have been so welcoming. You know, we've always had a welcoming experience for the families, but the facilities just kind of weren't the best. And so, we really wanted to make sure that when we're onboarding our students and families, they have the best experience. And Capoja was really built for that. So, there's really child-centered, modern facilities. There's a playground specific for the littlest learners. We see that as a really a great natural bridge into kindergarten to make that stress for families and students less and just building connections from the start. And so, we heard they're having their open house on the 3rd from 4:00 to 7:00, and I'll be down there, hopefully get to see a lot of the families. But it is a great, bright, just safe, conducive learning space. We're appreciative of the team. And again, I'll give a second shout-out to the facilities team. They moved a lot of stuff in a short amount of time. And so, just a really great team effort between building leadership, district leadership, and then the staff who make it all happen. So, hopefully, everyone enjoys that new setting. As far as other back-to-school resources, I mentioned the Annual Census. All kinds of information is available on our website. So, if you go to sspps.org and click on School Year, you'll see there's handbooks. So, I know a lot of times, families want to know more information about the school and expectations, so our handbooks are listed there. School Supply List. I had a parent at open house last week say, "I wasn't sure if I could find it." We hopped on the phone together and found it really quickly. So, that's the great one-stop shop. Transportation links and information. Little early, but yes, we share information about e-learning or emergency closings and things like that. So, again, our website is loaded with information, but this is a great time to hop on there and just click on that School Year link to find out what you need to know. And then, just some key dates to note here. So, we heard a little bit about the Family Connection Days. So, we've got on the 27th and 29th for the middle school and high school. CLC on the 27th. And then, Capoja and Lincoln have their Family Connection Day and Kids' Choice Open House on the 28th. But again, lots of information coming at you. Please refer to our website to stay up to date with those. And then, we do have that rolling start that Principal Chocky kind of mentioned. So, the first day's of school, so Tuesday, right after Labor Day. We'll have grades 1 through 6, 9, and 12, and then, anybody new to the secondary. We want them to come in and get that experience. Then, on Wednesday, we'll bring in kindergarten, 7, 8, and 10 and 11. And then, our littlest learners, our fours and threes come in that Thursday for fours and then the following Monday for threes. So, lots of information coming at you, but again, our website's such a great place. You can learn information about our boards. You can follow up on board meetings and materials there. But again, tons of resources linked in there. If you're struggling to figure anything out, please reach out to your school, your teacher, your school office. Everyone's here to help make sure that we have such a great launch, and you can just feel the energy and excitement of South St. Paul Public Schools right now. So, it's a great time to be superintendent, a very proud superintendent here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zambrino. All right. Moving on to consent items. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent items on tonight's agenda, which include financial claims, bills payable, and staffing as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Perfect. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right. If you look at the agenda, the next section is policies, but we don't have any policies up for review this evening. But the policy committee will resume regular meetings in September, so watch this space. Okay.
It'll start filling up.
And we'll move on to business items. We have two items before us this evening. First, I'm looking for a motion for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the brand refresh logos and executive summary. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Awesome. Thank you. And I'd like to invite Lisa, and I think Danette's here to help you out, to speak to this process and present to the public.
Well, thank you for letting us formally present to you. I know you have seen this presentation from us twice already, so this is the third time coming before you, but we're really excited to have it on camera tonight and kind of start our unveil with our staff and our communities. We're officially going to do it with our staff tomorrow, hopefully, if we have the blessing of the board tonight. So, we'll just get started and talk a little bit about what a brand refresh is. And, oops, let me do this so you can kind of... Help me, too. So, a brand refresh is really a visual and strategic update on how the district presents itself. So, think, it's really an updated look and feel. So, think logo, like what are district logos? Maybe it's been a long time. 2008, I think, about is when we last took a look at our logos, so really getting those more modern. Colors, fonts, messaging, and tone. So, like how we present ourselves, how we talk or share things is really important. And improved consistency across material. So, strengthens our brand message, it aligns visuals and updated mission-vision. So, think printed handouts, email signatures, building signage, and things like that is what we're taking a look at. So, another thing is, so it also builds on exactly what we are. So, we're still going to be the Packers, so that's not changing. We're still going to have the maroon as part of our pride, which we know that runs very deep in here in our community. And we'll have the Bull or A-Bull as our mascot, as we'll show you here in just a little bit. So, think of it as like getting a fresh coat of paint on your house. So, we're just trying to kind of just do some subtle changes and really update and be more modern in kind of how we present ourselves. So, why now? So, as you know, we just finished our strategic plan this spring. And so, then, the next natural step, what districts typically do, is start to look at kind of their brand. And so, we really want to align our brand to our new mission and vision and kind of what we're doing there. The other piece that's really coming into play is ADA compliance. And so, by 2026, we need to have, we need to meet some color compliance. So, we're really close on a lot of the colors that you'll see that we've had used in like our core values and things like that, our secondary color palette, which Danette will talk to a little bit here. But by 2026, we need to have more of that ADA compliance. So, how we use the colors, so what colors can be used on top of other colors, so maybe like white on top of a yellow or white on top of a maroon. There's different font sizes, and there's just a lot of rules that we need to follow. So, this is going to really help us simplify and be more accessible for all of our community. The other piece is just marketing. Families are shopping, staff are shopping where they want to work, and so, we need to be competitive. And first impressions count, and so, we need to really be putting our best foot forward, and we're hoping that what you see tonight is going to help us start that work. So, since April, we've really been working hard and getting stakeholder engagement. So, we have talked with staff, we've talked with families, community members. We took all of the data that we used in our strategic plan, which was hundreds of comments, to really learn about what South St. Paul, what, who South St. Paul is and what we're proud of and what we really want to showcase. So, we really learned a lot of that. We came back, and we came with some logo samples, and then, we brought those before our coaches and advisors, just to kind of do a temperature check, to see how close we were to what we heard. And before we actually brought it to our coaches and advisors, we had some several back and forth. So, we weren't quite there, but then, we kind of got close, and we thought, okay, let's check with our coaches and advisors, who use our logos probably the most outside of Danette and I and our communications team. So, and I feel like we were close. They had some really good feedback, and we gave them a couple samples, and they really wanted to focus their energy on one direction, on the Bull. We had a couple of different Bull options that we gave them, and they chose one to say, "It's not quite there, but we really can see what this could be." And so, they gave us some feedback, and then, we came back to the drawing board, and we really kind of worked through those. And so, we're excited to kind of share what, how their feedback really shaped the logos that you'll see tonight. Some things that we did hear from the group is that we really had little attachment to the Apple that we're currently using in our district logo. And there's a really strong love for the South and South St. Paul, which we all know. We always get confused for St. Paul, and we want to really make our statement that we are South. We're South St. Paul. Packer pride is alive and well, and there's really the desire for tradition, right? And also, to welcome in new families and new students and new staff. And so, just to be inclusive of everybody in our community. So, I'm going to turn over to Danette Childs, who's been very instrumental, really, in helping us get to this point. And so, she's going to talk through some of the pieces that we're going to showcase tonight.
Yeah. So, while we get to the exciting stuff, the first thing we're going to show you is our refreshed color palette. As you can see, we're keeping that maroon. We did change it a little bit. Now, it's more of a true maroon, whereas before, we were more of a burgundy. So, we're going back to that true maroon color. And we also wanted to get a little more out of our primary colors, so we've added in that rich gold next to it. And the gold is actually a nod to our history before, about pre-1990 or so, we actually had gold as one of our primary district colors. And around that time when they rebranded, they got rid of it and went to the maroon and white. So, we're going to add that back in so we get a little more pop of color. We did try different tones of gold. We kind of went more of the lighter one with the U of M, and then, we did this darker one. And it kind of settled with this more darker, rich gold, just to make it our own. And it also comes into play with that ADA compliance. The brighter gold, there's a lot more restrictions on if you can use it over different colors and when you can use it with white. This one, we can use anywhere, so we'll have more color options with it. And then, below those are the secondary colors. These we use in our marketing materials that help us to stay consistent. They won't show up in our logo anywhere, but you will see them in different accents, like in our core values, they're reflected there. And all of these colors are also ADA compliant, to be on maroon, on white, and easily accessible. Okay. So, this is our current logo. One thing that we heard in the focus group that Lisa already mentioned is that there really wasn't an attachment to that Apple. People felt that the Apple seemed too generic for just education in general, and it wasn't SSP. And it was also designed back in 2008 when we were becoming an IB World School District. So, that's why the globe is reflected in the Apple. And now that we've kind of drifted away from that, we want to come back to being South St. Paul. So, drumroll. Here's our new logo. The focus of not being confused with St. Paul was brought into play with this one. That gold is at the beginning. We really wanted to highlight the South in South St. Paul. If you notice, between the S and the P, we bring in those Bull horns as a nod to South St. Paul and what we're known for. It brings us closer to our mascot and being the Bulls. And we can be more flexible with this design. It's a lot more simple. We can have one color options, two color options, or this is the full color option. And the simplicity of the lines will make it much easier and cheaper for us to get, to use on apparel and other swag items like that. Okay. So, this is our current mascot. We kind of touched on this a little bit, but it looks a lot like the Chicago Bulls. And back when we got this mascot, that was okay, but now that everything is so public and it's really easy to find things on the internet, we run a much greater risk of receiving a cease and desist letter. So, we are kind of getting ahead of that before we could ever be put in that situation. And the other thing that was surprised us is in those focus groups, especially with the coaches and the advisors, we learned that they weren't really using this mascot. We thought it was showing up everywhere. You see it on like the walls and things, but nobody was using it in their apparel or on their uniforms, that sort of thing. So, that was a little surprising for us. And now, we'll look at the new one. This is our new Bull. We went from the front-facing Bull to the side-facing Bull, brought some of that new gold in, and made it a little more dynamic. So, we originally started the journey with a front-facing Bull and went back and forth a lot, and we just felt like we weren't really hitting the mark with it. So, we decided before the coaches' meeting, we're just going to throw in this side-facing Bull. It was very plain and generic, but we just kind of wanted them to see the different types that there could be. And we were pretty surprised that everyone kind of went with the side-facing Bull and ran with it. The energy really seemed to go that way. So, we switched our attention from the front-facing Bull to the side-facing Bull, and this is what we came up with. It will, this is the full color version, but there will be a one-color version, too, so it's easier to put on things. And there's a look at them side by side. And then, this is just an example of how they could show up. We're not saying this is how they always will show up, but just an idea of what it could look like on, in one color, on shirts, with the Bull. And so, one thing we wanted to do with this is we wanted to have a logo and a look that our teams could be proud of to wear, but we also didn't want to limit their creativity and their freedom. So, the one thing that we really wanted to do was have this logo that everybody will want to put on things, but let them make it their own. We just asked that the logos aren't altered and show up somewhere, but really, designs and everything are pretty flexible.
There's one thing we heard from a lot of our teams is they have kind of their own identity. So, I know like Ryan will talk about, they've got like this S on their hat, and so, that's something that they didn't want to lose. And we know that like our wrestling team has a certain logo that they like, and our soccer team. And so, we don't want to take that away from them. We certainly want them to still have that. Our piece with the brand refresh is that we just asked that our logo, either the SSP or the Bull in some sort, shows up on their jerseys or their apparel somewhere, and then, they can certainly add in the other elements as they want. So, we want to keep their creativity, keep their identity, but just also make sure that we know, South St. Paul Packers, we're all consistent in what that look is, so. And so, really, just like I said, consistency is key. So, we're all showing up the same. And so, what we have seen kind of throughout the last several years is really just how that's changed. People had been taking our Bull and just modifying it and just doing it in different ways. And so, we just really want to be consistent in how we show up. So, we're always showing up as the South St. Paul Packers, and when we show up, people know, they can recognize us quickly. And so, we really believe that this brand kind of brings us back up to more of the modern look of really who we are. So, our hope with the blessing of the board, I think, tonight would be that we can launch this with our staff tomorrow at our opening days. And then, we'll kind of start working behind the scenes to kind of do that rollout, because because we really want our community and our staff and everybody really be excited about this and start marketing. And so we're going to meet with apparel partners and all of the booster and advisory groups, because we want them to be excited about this. We want them to have access to all of the files that they're going to be able to put on their apparel and things like that. The one thing that we really want to stress is that you're going to start to see this stuff come out digitally first, right? The digital world really that we live in, we're able to roll things out like on our website and things like that much sooner. Print materials, maybe game programs, or flyers, or posters, or things like that will happen. And then more of the signage and courts and all that stuff will come just natural replacement cycle. Jerseys and stuff, we're not asking our coaches to kind of change jerseys overnight. That's not what we're asking, just as their natural replace. Next time they replace that, that we'll kind of take a look at that, so. So I know you've heard that before, and we're just really excited to kind of bring it now to, you know, our community and showcase that, so. Questions, comments?
Any questions from the board?
Go ahead, Wendy. I just wanted to say a couple things. First of all, the, you know, the things that we have as symbols of our school district are very important. And so as you went about this brand refresh, Lisa, and others really wanted to say thank you for the amount of community involvement and engagement that you had with both community members, with our coaches, and faculty, and staff, and administrators, and parents. That provides the needed credibility to ensure that this will be successful into the future. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And it provides confidence to me, as we're voting on this tonight, that this is something that will not only be used, but also be part of who we are as Packers. And one question I had was, is the new mascot, are they also named Sirloin? Or is that...
I don't know, maybe we'll have to go through a naming. Like, I don't know if we want to...
It's a great name, though, I don't know.
I know, right? I guess maybe that's something we could leave up to our kids.
More to come.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to have to ask our student school board reps. Okay, thank you, Paul. Any other questions or comments? I want to thank you so much, Justice Director Cummings. It's shared like so much work went into this. And I'm just excited to see where it takes us. Thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries 5-0. Great. Next item, I'm looking for a motion for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the continuing teacher contract, contracts as presented for 2025-26. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And I invite Dr. Zambrino to speak to this.
Yeah, thank you. It's a fun one, it's an exciting one. And we'll be celebrating this tomorrow with all of our teachers who achieve a continuing contract. Sometimes you hear the word tenure, but it actually in statute is called continuing contract status. And so that means that they've completed either their three years of probationary teaching, or if they'd done that somewhere else, they've completed one full year successfully with us. And then it's when they started today, actually, that they achieved tenure or continuing contract status. So congratulations to our teachers who are achieving that milestone in their career. It's a big deal, I remember it. I got to do it in two different districts. Back then, you had to do three years twice. So I'm happy that they don't all have to go through that. But we're also really pleased and proud of those teachers for choosing us to be the place they want to do that. So excited to have that happen.
If there are no questions or discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And congratulations to all those staff members. All right, as our final agenda item this evening, I will ask our school board members to share updates on committees they serve on, or highlight any recent district activities or events they've participated in. So I'll start down here, Director Cummings.
Well, I don't have much this time, but I did just want to provide a shout out to our teachers. We, the school district welcomed new teachers last week. And this week, all teachers are back on. And I just can remember the name of every single one of my teachers and what impact they had on my life. And as teachers are preparing again for another school year, I just wanted to give a shout out to all of our teachers and educators and learners, faculty member and staff, who are really shaping our young people in South St. Paul and, you know, changing the future trajectory of our community. So thank you so much.
That is a lovely sentiment. Thank you. Vice Chair Clapton.
Thank you. I don't have any committee updates to share. And for activities and other things I've seen around town, I really have to thank our students. I've had quite a few conversations with kids growing into all different grades. And I'll ask them what they think about starting school and how they feel about it. I try not to ask too much of a leading question there. And every kid is so excited to be coming back to school. I'm so glad that they have that excitement, that they look forward to seeing their friends, they look forward to seeing their teachers, because they're all remembering every teacher they ever had. Those back-to-school nights, they've all got to go and visit every other teacher they've ever had. But our students really are looking forward to the start of the year. And they're not all nervous. Of course, some have concerns. It's a new school that they might be going to. But just knowing that school is a place that our kids look forward to coming to, that's really why I'm here doing this work. So I'm glad that those kids are excited to be coming back.
Thank you. Director Duffy.
No updates. Actually, I guess one committee update. The Open Foundation, they've, I don't know if I'm at liberty to say who yet, but they did find a recipient for the Carrie Petrozuski Award that will be presented on September 12th at the football game. Football season's starting, that's exciting. And so a lot of exciting things happening around. The football season kicks off on Friday night. The Packers will be on the road at Camden. But really exciting things, the kids are really having a lot of fun. There's a lot of excitement going on. The first football game before school starts is, used to be one of my favorite ones. And weather cooperating, it's starting to feel like fall already, which is pretty abnormal. But it should be a fun week. I know soccer's already started and kicked off, and volleyball. So really fun fall, a lot of great teams. I'll just give a shout out to Coach LaRose. They had their media day, and the whole coaching staff on the volleyball team had some, had a lot of fun with their pictures as a staff. So that was pretty fun. So if you haven't had the opportunity to see those pictures, you should, because they're pretty comical, so.
Thank you. Director Felton.
Yes, the first thing I have is that, you know, that I am the representative on the Educational Foundation. And we have had the discussion started now for two of our fall events that will be starting in about a month as they're part of their major fundraisers. The first one, which is Wednesday, September 24th, it's their Walk-a-Thon, which will be held at Lincoln Center. Starts at 4:30 in the afternoon. It is a great opportunity for all students, elementary, secondary. All of our students can go to the Walk-a-Thon. As I said, it is part of their major fundraising event. So think about it, Wednesday, the 24th. And the other thing, their annual event, the Gala, which will be held on Thursday, November 6th, at the Mendocota Country Club, which is also, serves as one of their major fundraisers. It's a wonderful event. I have been to both of these events several times. And at the Mendocota Country Club, many opportunities to purchase items. If anyone would like to donate any items to the foundation, and they put those on for sale. And there's also a catered meal at Mendocota that you can have. And I've been to this several times. It is a wonderful opportunity. Of course, and I always buy many of their gifts that they have out. It's a great time to be buying Christmas presents, which I do, yeah. And the other thing, kind of on a more personal thing, and I know I have mentioned it already in the past several times. Coming up next week, believe it or not, I am a South St. Paul graduate from the class of 1975. We are having our 50th class reunion next week, starting on Thursday, September 4th, at 6:00 p.m. until 11:00 o'clock. We will be having a nice dinner event at Lost Spur Country Club out in Eagan, Thursday night, wonderful event. And then Friday evening, September 5th, at the high school, we will be attending the football game, which will be held at 7:00 o'clock at the secondary building, watching our Packers play, that is great. And then also on Saturday, September 6th, in the morning, at 10:00 o'clock, there will be an opportunity to many of our classmates, we've got almost 100 already that will be attending this event, there will be a tour of the secondary building, which has changed quite a bit in the last 50 years from when we graduated there. So we look really forward to Mr. Glenn Bernstein, who will be doing the tour for us. And we are to enter on door number seven, which is the entrance door that is connected to the parking lot facing east. Door number seven, if you plan on attending that Saturday morning. Make sure you come to that door. And also, I just want to say a major thank you and looking forward to our staff members that are back. We welcome all of our new staff members and students. So exciting to have the kids back in our, in our school programs. So we look forward to that. So I welcome and thank you all for coming back. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. All right, well, what can I touch on that hasn't already been encapsulated? As Director Cummings mentioned, last week, we had our new staff orientation. And like him, I had the opportunity to be there to welcome people. There's so much excitement and potential with our new staff. And I can feel it just in our community, like the kids, as Anna's mentioned, the kids are just so excited to go back. So you know what? Embrace all of the excitement of fall, of change, of new starts, and enjoy this last week of summer vacation, right? That is all on our agenda this evening. I will hereby entertain a motion to adjourn